At this time, we will call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trusty DeBoer, Trusty Truchel.
Here.
Trusty Pfeifer.
Here.
Washleygar.
Here.
Trusty Connor.
Here.
Trusty Halquist.
Here.
If you'd all rise for the pledge of allegiance led by Trusty Halquist.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trusty DeBoer, Trusty Truchel.
Here.
Trusty Pfeifer.
Here.
Washleygar.
Here.
Trusty Connor.
Here.
Trusty Halquist.
Here.
If you'd all rise for the pledge of allegiance led by Trusty Halquist.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have public comments for anybody that would like to speak in public comments. Okay. Anybody that wants to speak in public comments? Okay. First item on our agenda is consideration of a village board, the village board minutes of the January 9th, 2023 meeting, and the special village board minutes of the January 5th, 2023 meeting.
I'll move to approve the minutes from January 5th.
I'll second.
Could you, are you on now?
Yeah.
Can you restate the motion just so that it gets recorded?
I'll move to approve the village board minutes of January 9th, 2023, and special village.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the village board minutes from the January 9th meeting and the special village board minutes from the January 5th meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have is consideration of items related to vouchers. We have consideration of vouchers for payment in the amount of $135,773.28.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for payment in the amount of $135,773.28.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the vouchers in the amount of $135,773.28. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have actions related to licenses and permits. We have Kelsey Stevens and Alyssa Schmidt. We also have a temporary operator's license for the Chamber of Commerce annual street dance for Donald Mintern Jr.
I'll make a motion to approve all three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the regular bartender operator's license and the temporary operator's license. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have is consideration of a second reading for an ordinance number 01092023, an ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to private alarm systems. I will ask that Chief give us just a very brief update of what you said last time, just so everybody knows what this reading is for.
As a reminder, from our first reading of this ordinance, this is just something that we are trying to clean up the ordinance book on. This ordinance pertains to our lakes or our lake area dispatch center that used to be in place pre-2004. So that dispatch center no longer being in place now that we're with the Wash County Communications Center and that alarms don't go directly in from an alarm system directly to a dispatch center. They go through a third-party alarm company. This ordinance really is no longer in effect because they can't notify a lakes coordinator and alarm can't go directly into the dispatch center. So really no need to have this on our ordinance municipal code. Therefore, we're looking just to remove the language and title it reserved.
So you could go one more reading or suspend the rules and pass tonight if you desire.
I was gonna make a motion to suspend the rule.
Right. That was a motion.
I would second the motion to suspend the rules.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The rules are suspended.
All right. I'm still laughing. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance 01-09-2023, an ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to private alarm systems.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to pass, ordinance 01092023, an ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to private alarm systems. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have items referred from the January 16th Plan Commission meeting. We have an item that is consideration of an application for renovations to the site and exterior of the building at 128 Cottonwood Avenue, Boardwalk Financial.
I'll start real quick. They do not appear to be here tonight. This was approved by the Plan Commission. There are several people here that are part of that Plan Commission. Everybody always does know that we say, hey, come to the meeting. So, I mean, the Plan Commission did pass this unanimously. Did pass this unanimously, so I will put it up to the board. If you guys want to discuss it, approve it, have them come back, that's your call.
I will say, I'm on the Plan Commission, and the improvements that they're looking to make looked really nice. And they are, if I remember correctly, they're gonna be taking down the outside stairs that were put on the outside of the building, correct? And they're going to put some bushes where that one walkway is. But the renovations are gonna take the front of it, so it used to be a fire department, if I remember correctly, and they're gonna have those windows look just like it was back in the day. The only question or thing that came up was having a way for somebody on the second floor to get out. Should there be a fire near the steps? And I think that what they came up with was that if you look on the back of the building, there's actually a flat landing, so if they can come out a window there, is that right, Jeff?
I would say that's accurate from the concern that someone did present at the Plan Commission.
Okay. That was the only thing that came up. And that's it.
Yes, that's accurate of what was portrayed at.
I believe they were going to add a couple of parking spots to that alleyway was going to be blocked off, and they were gonna put a couple more parking spots in there. This was back, was it the firehouse in the 60s?
Longer than that.
50s, 40s? Because, I mean, because, so Mr. Jamless was probably.
There's a couple that burned down, but then, yeah, I mean, it was way back.
So Chief Jamless was probably still there?
You're a cadet, man.
I got a Texaco helmet.
I simply answered a question, I didn't partake in the joke.
Tim, they also said about using the parking at Beer Snobs, said they could use their parking too if they needed it.
As well as their trash, their trash bin.
Receptacle, correct.
Yeah. I don't, I don't, I'll make a motion to approve. I don't, I really don't have a problem with it. We reviewed it on the Plan Commission and I thought it was okay.
I would second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the, to approve the renovation to the site and exterior of the building at 128 Cottonwood Avenue, made the submittal by Boardwalk Financial and sent to the village board from the Plan Commission for approval. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have is consideration of a special events permit for the Heartland Chamber of Commerce Street Dance on July 22nd, 2023. The presenter is here. Mrs. Doro.
Hi, Donna Doro, on behalf of the Heartland Chamber of Commerce Street Dance Committee, 300 Cottonwood Avenue, Suite 12. We are here to ask if we can move the street dance, which was brought to the park when COVID was happening, and then we, to be able to keep it going on, to have more space, we brought it to the park. We'd like to now bring it back to the street where it has always been, and we're looking to do that on July 22nd, and asking that the streets be closed down at noon, and we'll have everything cleaned up and done like around, usually noon or 1:00. Yep, so that's, we're just asking for permission for that. I did go downtown to all the businesses that would be affected and went in and either spoke personally with them and got a signature and/or left the flyer behind stating that this meeting was happening tonight, and if they had any questions, concerns, or disagreed with anything, that they were to come to this meeting to express it. And then I also said that if it was approved or not approved, that I would go back and let the businesses and residents know.
And, may I ask a question?
Sure.
The chamber did this for how many years on the street? This isn't something new to Heartland.
No, no.
It was moved for two or three, two or three years it was moved to the park?
Correct.
But it was for many years it was on the street?
It started in the 70s.
Yeah, so it was, it's been on the street for many times, so the coordination is not, this is nothing new. It's going, if Chief wants to add anything, he can. But I mean, this is going right back to what's been done.
Oh, it's been done, yes.
Yep.
And we have the same electrical hookup, we have the same businesses approvals, and restrooms, the banks closing down.
Yep.
And we'll not have drive-through traffic early that day, so everyone's on board of it, with it.
The police department doesn't have any concerns, as the village president noted, this has been done for many years. We just go back to those plans, and we were well in front of our time by putting hard barricades many, many years ago, just to ensure a safe environment for everyone.
I do want to thank the chamber for bringing it up. Obviously, I'm gonna be voting in favor with this statement, but I do, I am happy that the chamber's bringing it up. I know sometimes people get, there's people that are like, hey, bring it back to the street. So I think that's really cool to listen to the people and, and bring it back there if they're having more fun there, and I'm sure it's gonna continue to be an extremely successful event, so I think that's great.
Yeah, I would agree. In tech talks around the community, everyone has asked, when's it gonna come back to the street? When are we gonna put it back on the street? So I'm thrilled that you guys are bringing it back to the street as well.
Same with me. I've heard a lot of feedback that we need to have it back on the street downtown, so things are great.
Well, we were the only event during COVID that actually put on the revend because we got to do it in the park, and that was, so it was great that we could move it there, but it's time to bring it back where it belongs.
I'll make a motion to approve the special events permit for Heartland Chamber of Commerce Street Dance on July 22nd.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Heartland Chamber of Commerce Street Dance on July 22nd, 2023, in the street. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. The next item we have is discussion and consideration of an agreement with HydroCorp for the 2022-2023 Utility Cross Connection Inspection Program in the amount of $11,556. Mr. Felton, our DPW director.
So the Village of Heartland, the Village of Heartland is required by the Wisconsin DNR to do a cross connection and backflow prevention checks for all residential, all the way, all the way through all your commercial. The DPW, when we install meters, we do the residential inspection. When you get into the four families and the commercial units, it's a little more intriguing. You have to be up on state code, and then you also have to know how the backflow, how to test the backflow prevention systems. So we contracted that out for the last couple of years through HydroCorp. Last year's cost was $11,208, and for the renewal for the 2023 season, it went to $11,556. The reason we do this is if a backflow preventer or you have cross connections, the odds of contaminating municipal water greatly intensifies, especially if we have like a water main break in a system. It's like a Venturi system, it'll suck whatevers on the opposite end. If it's chemicals, if it's soaps or whatever, it'll suck it into the water mains, and we don't want that, so that's why we do this, a cross connection and backflow prevention. We require all municipal, I mean, all commercial entities to have that. So, staff is recommending renewing the cross connection program with HydroCorp Incorporated for the 2023 year for the sum of $11,556.0.
And they did offer us a two-year contract. It was no savings to do two-year, and with this, you're hoping to go out and get more companies to see who else might be able to do this next year.
So I did, I called another company that does this, their local company out of New Berlin. They said the initial cost would have doubled because they have to do initial investigation of every commercial property, and that takes twice as long. This company's been doing it for years. They know our systems, they know where the backflow preventers are, so they just walk in and literally test them and get out. So that's why we're opting to come back with HydroCorp.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to, let's see, where am I at here? To agree to the agreement with HydroCorp for the 223 Utilities Cross Connection Inspection Program in the amount of $11,556 even.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement with HydroCorp, HydroCorp for 2022-23 Utilities Cross Connection Inspections Program in the amount of $11,556. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Before we get to the next item, I do want to add that the opportunity was provided to be here by the person that's being nominated by myself as the village president to nominate someone to the Police and Fire Commission. That person isn't here not out of choice of not being here, but did have another engagement that was already, that was already planned and scheduled for some time, and did, he did offer his apologies for not being able to be here. But the next item is a consideration of appointment of Rob Little to the Police and Fire Commission by President Fannerstill. His bio was included and his volunteer form was included in the packet. This is a, well, this is a replacement appointment to Ken Patterson, I'm sorry, I was gonna say it's a five-year appointment. Appointments are typically for five years. This would not be for five years. This is to fulfill the term of, God bless his soul, wonderful man, Ken Patterson, who served on Police and Fire Commission in great capacity, but we have a very good gentleman coming to fill that role.
It's a great nomination. I think he's more than qualified to serve the community even longer. He's served the community for quite a long time before this, so I think it's, it's awesome. Good pick.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to move Rob Little to Police and Fire Commission and to fill the open seat.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, or to appoint Rob Little to the Police and Fire Commission for discussion. Who made the motion?
I did.
Do you want to go first again, if you have anything? I just wanted to add that this person asked for a long time to, when I say a long time, I'm saying for months, but was really, really, really interested in the, in getting into this appointment. Does bring, obviously, you can see with the credentials, I mean, I'm looking at it right now, 33 years of fire in EMS, 11 years with the Village of Heartland, 22 years as a, as a fire chief, 11 years as an Army veteran. You know, we do try to make good picks, and I appreciate the board's, what is appearing like it may be approval, but the, you know, we don't take these things lightly, or I don't take them lightly, and I think it is appropriate to have consultation with other people on what would be good. So if anybody from staff has anything to add, if there are any reservations, I guess I just open that up. I know it's only been recently that there's been some talk about picks and stuff like that, but I think when the whole board votes, they vote, so unless anybody has anything else, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried.
Thank you.
At this time, he's in for the abstention. Okay. Announcements?
I have an announcement. I just want to let everyone know that the region is now, they're going to do their fourth annual sleepout with the veterans on February 10th and 11th, and their goal is to raise awareness for the homeless vets, and they'll be accepting cash donations as well as non-perishable food and clothing. Let me see, the 10th and 11th, and 100% of the donations will be kept in southeast Wisconsin, and on Friday night, Miles Wenger, and I don't know if any of you know him, he'll be singing around 8:00. Prior to that, there's gonna be a taco dinner at the church up on the hill, by the cemetery. They're gonna start that about 6:00, so everybody come down and support them. They'll be sleeping in the parking lot. We'll have, anybody who wants to can pick out a square, bring a box, and sleep outside. It's lots of fun. That's it.
And if you don't, you can go visit.
Oh, it is, it is lots of fun.
I can tell you, I've personally experienced sleeping out for two days on the coldest days of the year, and it still was something that was rewarding. days of the year, and it still was something that was rewarding and just amazing. I'm doing it again this year. I'm praying for less cold.
Every single time you guys do this, it's the coldest year, the weekend of the year. I go and visit. I do not sleep. I go visit.
I learned you cannot bring an air mattress, you can't bring a memory foam pillow because they just don't work in cold weather.
Sounds like you found that out personally.
I did.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I would like to just give a kudos out to the Fire Department and the Police Department for their participation this last Saturday at the Kiwanis function. A lot of people came over to the fire trucks and were, was messing around over there, and then your two officers were actually participating in some of those events, and I think they lost, but, but, yeah. But it was a great, I mean, the kids loved it, so it was, so kudos to those guys.
I have two announcements. One of them being that I wanted to touch on, you know, we had a, we had a serious incident in Heartland, which seemed to be coming more and more frequently for PD and fire, and I don't want to take away from DPW because no one even pays attention to them when they're going all night taking care of a water main in three-degree weather, which we haven't had this year yet, but now that I just said it, it'll probably be six below. But no, in all seriousness, we did have a serious incident where there was someone that, I mean, really, I don't know how to say it better, but no, seriously got out of control, where, I mean, serious, there could have been serious damage to, bodily damage to people, if not death. Our police department did a fantastic job, in my opinion, of making sure to notify the community in the fastest way possible and, and to, it really sounds like, other than cars being shot and things of that nature, Chief, you can elaborate if you want to, but all the protocols were met, and it ended up being resolved, and no one was hurt. I think no one was hurt, other than property damage, which is, when you're talking about people firing off, you know, munitions in a village, that can get pretty scary quick. But I want to commend you guys for, I mean, really handling that. That's a tough situation. If you want to elaborate, you can.
No, thank you for that, and it was actually on my announcements list. Speak briefly of that event and actually, in more general terms, of the recent alerts that we've put in out to the community. I know there's some back and forth on social media and different thought processes, and I just want to let the board know, the police department takes it very serious anytime we entertain putting an alert out to the community. We don't do them for anything other than life safety type events where we're concerned for the well-being of our citizens in the Village of Heartland. So the event that the village president, Fannerstill, is speaking of is, we did have a male subject come to a business and start firing a shotgun in, towards the building, and this is a glass-front business. Luckily for the rounds fired, they did lodge into company vehicles, so there were no physical injuries, but not really because of his actions, more so by the grace of God, that it was not more devastating an event than it was. The staff at this particular company were awesome. They got on the phone right away, got the police department notified, and somehow, some way, were able to grab a license plate while taking fire from this individual. So that really expedited our response into finding out who was responsible for doing this. So we were able to coordinate with the Washoe County Sheriff's Department, because this was a resident of the Village of Sussex, and have them set up on his residence and then also be on the lookout for that vehicle. Just because he's a resident of the Village of Sussex doesn't mean that that's where he's ultimately going to go. We have no idea. We still are in our investigation. So as we know things, as I speak right now, I don't know these things always while the call's coming in. That takes time. If my crystal ball worked, we'd all be in a better place right now, but we don't have that crystal ball, so we have to be precaution, have, exercise precaution. And what we didn't want, because of the close proximity of our schools especially, and dismissal times approaching, we didn't want this individual who decided to shoot at an active business to show up at a school. So we look at what's the greater good, and then it was our decision to say, we want to put out an alert, we want to keep the community informed for life safety type of events. We were in constant contact with the schools. As soon as we got intel that this individual was in a pursuit with the Washoe Sheriff's Office and then ultimately barricaded inside his residence, I personally was on the phone with all the school administrators to let them know that they can clear any type of lockdown procedures and proceed as normally that they do. So that was that one, and then our other event that happened earlier that week, if we put a handful of these out a year, that's probably a lot for us, and we just happen to have two in a week. And then it's my understanding that Delafield may have one. I was not in the area to receive that, but obviously, I can control what the Heartland Police Department does, and then that other particular incident, it involved an assault situation where a vehicle was then stolen and a plethora of other criminal charges that took place. We thought the person initially left the area, that was our intelligence at the time, until a resident saw someone suspicious in their yard. So that's why we decided, the description of the suspicious individual matched that of our suspect in the assault, and we decided it was more important for the people of the community to know that this person may be at large. So that's why we put that, that particular alert out, and it actually ended up happening where the guy was located in a resident's garage, and we were quickly notified, and as he fled, we were able to effect an arrest without any injuries in Pembroke Park. So those are the reasoning behind our alerts. I know some people especially that don't have all the facts can be overly critical of those, and I guess my recommendation or advice to them is swipe through the alert and call it a day, especially when it's in the middle of the day. It takes a whole second of your life, which has obviously been productive in these situations I just explained. Or you do have opportunities to actually not receive alerts on your phone if you choose to do that. It's a, it's a very easy setting to do, and then you won't have that one, two-second bother if that happens to be the case. I unfortunately think it's just the human nature of people who want to complain about something that, that causes them to talk about something. So I don't think it's that big of a deal, but I do know it's been talked about, and as village trustees, I'm sure people get your ear on these matters, so I feel it's important to just give you some of the why of what we did. We do not take these decisions lightly. If we're going to err, we are always going to err on the side of caution, but we do believe they were done justifiably.
You have to understand, Chief, you're just never allowed to win. If something happens and you didn't send that alert out, they'd be saying, why wasn't there an alert? Am I wrong?
Fox 6 has approached us, and they have obviously gotten some correspondence on the alerts as well, and they asked about doing an informational piece on alerts, and I've agreed to do that tomorrow, hopefully to provide some more information. I feel that an informed community makes better decisions, and that's just one way I can try to add to that.
Thank you, Chief. The other announcement I had, not taking, Chief, if you have more, you can, but the other announcement that I have is that there is a, so there are some primary elections. None of them are inside of the village, and I don't even believe there's any county. I, I don't know, but there's none for the village. But there, there is some statewide races. I don't think there's any county. There are some statewide races where there is a primary for, I just want to make sure that everybody knows, and if you want to tell your neighbors and friends. Early voting, we call it early voting now, it's technically in-person absentee voting, but early voting takes place at the Village Hall from the 7th of February through the 14th of February, and it ends on the 14th of February. Sorry, 17th of February. 17th of February is when it ends at 5:00 PM. I just wanted everybody to know that. I know I've had a couple of questions on that.
February 21st.
Voting day is February 21st. I guess I'll include that, but a lot of people do ask about that, the early voting when they can. So that's our normal business hours, but on that Friday, the 17th, we, we do stay open till 5:00, so people can come in and do in-person absentee early voting. Hit it. Oh, we got more announcements? Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Are you done? Okay. Just a couple of things with RAC. We are working on collecting hometown celebration sponsorships, so send them our way. And we're finalizing bands for the Thursday night concert series in Nixon Park.
Awesome.
I just want to inform you all that I had received a couple of phone calls last week about some residents are getting, receiving flyers, and it's about having your water tested. So I did take this...
Keep holding it up so that Ben can catch it on a camera, but I don't know if he will, he will over there, won't he?
It, it was on, so I gave this notice to the police department. The police department ran it and found it out it was an invalid company. So I do want to tell everybody that if you have any questions, just give the Village Hall a call or the DPW, and we do do a consumer confidence report. This is all the testing on our water throughout the year, so we have all the information, or feel free to give us a call at the Village Hall.
Thank you, sir.
Chief?
Yeah, just to let you know, the Fire Department was nominated for an ovation award through the Chamber of Commerce. I believe that event is March 6th and at Rustic Manor.
March 15th.
15th, 16th?
16th.
March 16th, thank you, at the Rustic Manor. So other than that, we've been answering calls.
That's good. That's good. I think we're still talking throughout the village of how we're going to do that. How many? Sorry, I'm not supposed to discuss stuff while I'm up here.
Congratulations.
Unless it's out the... Congratulations, Chief. We're trying to see, I think you saw my email. We're trying to figure out what we can do. I'm guessing you'll be getting a table for sure.
Yeah, whatever we can.
There's no tables.
Well, that's right. Oh, I don't, well, whatever. We'll figure it out. We'll figure it out. If anybody of you have a comment on wanting to go along with personnel from the Fire Department, send it out to Ryan, send to Ryan if you're interested in going or going with your significant other. In the past, that's what the village has done.
Make a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we adjourn this meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting's adjourned.[1745.47]